Silence.
That's it?
Not mine.
Not mine?
It's mine.
So?
That Ooga, that was Ooga horn one.
Yeah, somebody. Take the field to do they, she probably may be out.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Any questions about the minutes, Scott?
Yeah, we, uh, what's the word on the adventure now? Has it been advertised?
Yes.
Yes, advertised, uh, yesterday, we advertise the seventeen, next week.
Okay. So, and it's, uh, sealed bid will be read at the next month's meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, the vehicle parking on Carriage Street, let me find out about that.
There's plenty of them.
Okay.
See, they are, I went out there too, they are off the road, probably fifteen feet. Uh, something else to do about what Scott just brought, about that building there on Carriage Street. Uh, isn't that gonna be two double units?
Yeah.
That'd be four dwellings.
Yeah, it'd be four families.
Four, four sewer, that's what I'm looking at, which you have.
Yeah, and they have to get a permit, right?
For what?
That sewer hookup.
That's, they have to come to you for that.
The sewer tap fee?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Whoever's building that, I guess, any guy owns it?
Uh, that is.
That's four times five hundred, ain't it?
No, 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 they're gonna use, they're gonna have to buy one tap.
They'll buy two taps.
Two taps?
One for each building, but there'll be two people on one tap.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Two taps.
So, they already got one existing tap, right?
Right.
So, they'll have to buy one tap fee and then four hookups.
Yeah. The hookup, the hookup will be at the house. When they come out of the house, the two houses will be hooked to the one tap. And there'll be two houses hooked to the, or two apartments, or whatever you wanna call them.
Double units, I got you.
They're double units.
So, that'd have one more tap.
But there, there's only two lines that goes out to the street. There's one tap already there for the houses that was at one seventeen, but they'll need another tap for the ha- the back houses.
Now, I'll let you tell me what to charge.
Oh, it's nine hundred.
No, no.
I don't know what.
Six hundred, I think.
I don't know what.
Five hundred, I'm almost positive.
I think it's six.
Nine in the beginning.
I don't know what.
Once they don't pay it, once they say, okay, we'll hook up, we'll just get.
It's in the ordinance, it's in the ordinance.
We won't put toilets in there.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance.
We won't have sinks and we'll just go and wash at the creek.
That would be disappointing.
Well, awful cold too.
Well, I'm sure it's. They might change their mind.
It's been worse than that in Green Fork. I, I remember before we put the sewer in, people carrying five gallon buckets to the creek.
Oh, yeah. My fact, after, after it was.
They'd be full.
After it was hooked up, they were still doing that.
Okay.
And I still need introduced to the street department, yeah.
Okay, well, you're gonna have to take a day off work, I mean, you can't extend that. Uh, we can't get them up here to a meeting. I will try to talk to them, I'm nor- I'm off on Mondays and once I've come in and check on them stuff, but I'll see if one evening maybe they, uh, we could talk them into coming up here and you, you could buy them supper somewhere or something, and a bunch of alcohol, we just send them out.
Cause I, I, I haven't even met them yet. Actually.
I don't think either one of them drink, which is a good thing.
I don't think.
Don't need to either if you met them, you don't know what I mean.
Yeah, that's for sure.
So, full sewer bills, two doubles. Those, uh, I did a little research myself, or kind of today especially, I went over by, uh, what's that road that comes down on, uh, Chester Boulevard there by the, uh, ear, nose and throat? They've got the four speed humps. I noticed those humps are about four foot wide with like a three inch lift. And it looked to me like, I didn't see where they were like bolted anywhere, it looked like something they'd just poured and painted with the orange paint, stuff like that, but.
Problem, problem.
Waterfall, well, thank you ma'am.
Problem you got at this moment is it ain't gonna be long and they're gonna have to be peeled right back up because of the condition of Main Street. Main Street's asphalt is deteriorating very quickly. We patched it, patched it and tried to lay over it. The only real fix we got for now, just gonna bring that up to meeting, is if we're gonna do it, we need to plan it now. If we're gonna do any paving this year.
Well, you gotta figure out whether you're gonna get any money doing that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so we gotta start planning now if we're gonna do any paving. That needs ground up.
I thought I was getting ready to say, but it seemed like before we had talked about it last spring, you said it's gonna have to be ground up.
We're gonna have to grind it up, we're probably gonna have to take four to six inches off, um, all the way down.
How much you think there, is there on there right now?
Main's got such a crown on it, I mean, if you, especially this, uh, part north in front of the tracks, it's got so much of a crown there that it's got the centers that have to come down quite a bit. And then the backside, we've, we've overlaid that twice now.
Yeah. Maybe we have to sell our equipment and pay somebody to do it, I don't know where we're gonna get the money.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that even if we sell the equipment.
That's why I said, sell the equipment to pay somebody to do it, because I don't know where we're gonna get the money.
We ain't gonna get enough money on selling the equipment to pave it.
It wouldn't even start. But you said the center has to come down, cause it has to.
That, well, the whole thing has to come down.
On South Main.
Yeah.
Starting.
Starting right here at, at thirty-eight, all the way back. I mean, you can put the humps in, but then you throw them money away.
But you wouldn't.
We're gonna be grinding them up.
You wouldn't take the whole thing off, you're just gonna take the center, grind the center up?
No, you're gonna take the whole, you gotta take the whole road up, yeah, it's gotta be ground, we'll probably have to contract that to have company come in and grind it, there are companies that will do that, other than Milestone.
So, you're talking about South Main from the tracks down?
I'm talking about the whole Main Street.
Well, you're still talking, even if you're talking about us paving it and somebody else grinding, you're talking over a hundred thousand dollars.
You're talking quite a bit of money, I know.
Don't have no way to get that kind of money. Unless, this eclipse, that we can eclipse something out of it, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, you know. I need to get some measurements, see about material and get a price.
Campsite and wastewater treatment plant.
Well, we've been, Rick and I talked about that a little bit earlier.
They just don't big enough. They'll have to, marshal department have to be out there then.
Our department?
Mm-hmm. If they do campsites out there, someone's got to maintain security.
I'll take the truck down, use that gun, put everybody's.
Cause it'd be out of towners coming in, they're, they're coming in for this and then they're leaving, they're not really gonna care what.
Right, we're gonna have to have cleanup crew and a. All right, anybody got any questions? Uh, well, you probably wouldn't know what's in the minutes anyway, but, uh, if not, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
Post has been made and properly seconded to accept, uh, the minutes from last month's meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same, thank you Scott.
So, you wanna buy and come and you're grinding yourself?
Yeah.
We don't have no citizens here, so we don't have any appearance by citizens. Me and Scott are about the only, well, Nita and Brenda are citizens, I forgot, I'm sorry. Brenda, got anything for us, Nita? Officer Bush, you're up.
Okay, uh, so my, the, on, on the grant, we got the, um, official letter, war from, from the, from the state. Brenda has the SAM number active and also Brenda's, is working with Adam, who is the administrator on other documentation, uh, including the town's vendor ID number, which I don't even know what that even means, but, uh, Brenda's gonna take care of that, uh, working with Adam, something that we don't, we.
I saw him give you one.
I'm not even sure what a vendor ID number is, it may, it could be something that like when you contract with state, with the state on.
I think it's what the government, the number the government pays us for.
You've got it, you've got it, he's got the whole, he's in the sand, he's got your license, he's got your sign.
Okay.
He lost his.
Oh.
Police report.
It's, it's, you gotta look, you gotta copy the police report?
I do.
Yeah, everyone does, I put, I put a cop on everybody's.
I took Kathy because I write on it, I don't write on this one, do we have another one down there?
There, there might be in there.
Wait a minute, it's probably hidden right here. Nope.
What's that one that's upside down right there? Oh.
That's all right. I can believe you.
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, black truck in the three hundred block at South Main, uh, that will be, that will be removed within the next couple of days.
It was removed, what do you mean by removed?
Removed, gone.
You're having it towed?
Well, they're gonna move it or it's gonna be towed, that's pretty much how it was conveyed. More, I was more polite than that, but yeah. Uh, the plate, the plates are expired and also it, uh, doesn't run, so that was two strikes against.
Probably why it's been sitting there for the last six months.
Five months.
People's been talking about.
No, the plate expires six months, you know, it's been there at least that long.
People's been talking about the old junk motor homes that's sitting up there on Pearl Street. They say the doors open, critters can go in and everything.
On Pearl Street?
That's their doghouse.
Uh-huh.
What, 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 what'd you say, on what, on what street?
On Pearl.
What Pearl?
Thirty-eight, thirty, thirty-eight Pearl Street.
There ain't a.
Right at Maple.
Motor home.
That's not on Pearl Street.
That's on Maple.
No, that's parked in their, on their, in their yard.
It's parked in their yard.
Okay, then.
The door is open on it, critters can get in it and neighbors are unhappy.
That's up to them, I mean, it, it, it runs and that's what I was supposed to verify that it ran. It does run, so if they wanna leave it open, that's, they're in, there's no law against that. It's their, if, if they choose to let, that's, that's on them, all I care about is that runs and moves.
Be a good place for your feral cats.
There you go.
Well.
Never thought of that.
At some point, it's not gonna run, because if anything can go in there, it's gonna get the wires eaten. And so, at that point, we can do something about it.
Right.
Well, I can, we can always go back and check, check with them and say, hey, you need to fire this thing up and let's see if it's, let's see if it's still runable or not, so.
Cause they brought it in on a record, I was told.
They did, and then they called the record back to, to move it into their yard.
Yep.
But they said for that was cause of, of tires, flat tires, so, but the thing, thing is, uh, it's a mobile home, so if the tires are not up, then that, that makes it not movable anymore.
Not really a mobile home.
No, it's still a mobile home.
Motor home, motor.
Motor home.
Yeah, so if the tires go flat or it looks like it's not operable, then we go, we just pay them a visit again. I mean, we're not blind that if they're lying to us. Air Force. Uh, updated the training records to Alea, uh, everybody's got their, their training hours in for the year, we had to, to, uh, validate that. Because now, um, Alea has a rule that if anyone is missing training hours, they are suspended automatically come January first.
So, they're okay for two thousand and forty-four already?
No, for twenty-three, correct?
For twenty-three, so now we, we.
We gotta start over.
Yes, we need to start over in January again.
So, Jeff, the new.
Glover, yes.
He, his, probably didn't need any by the time he had.
No, he, yeah, he had all his from the, from the hospital.
Okay.
Um, updated the SOP to meet the new use of force rules set by the state. So, they're, they're kinda, they're changing the use of force, which, like in our case, is talking about like, uh, um, a pursuit policies, things like that, we, you know, it used to be, it was kind of relaxed on when you could chase somebody, but obviously, over the years, there's been a lot of litigation where officers have done some, uh, not smart moves chasing people, and people have gotten killed, so they've, uh, they've kind of changed that, you can't, you can't shoot, you can't shoot from a moving vehicle unless, uh, deadly force is authorized, there's, there's all kind, I mean, things that you would think was common sense.
Who would authorize in a situation like that, who would be the one to authorize deadly force?
They're all depending what the circumstance was. Yeah, so if that officer, the, the whole total, the, the whole total circumstances is gonna be reviewed. And if, if it's not, if it's not just, you know, if it's not deemed that it was justified, then you're gonna, you're gonna see what's happening in other states where officers are being prosecuted.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to be able to justify that you're protecting a life or something, basically.
Used to be, you know, uh, like a cop would go stand in front of a car, then the guy drives the car forward, and then, then the cop would say, well, I was in fear of my life, well, you can't do that anymore. You can't cause the action that, uh, that made you, uh, in fear of your own life, so, I mean, it's just, it's common stuff that should have been done a long time ago, it's just now it's in writing on, on, uh, the do's and don'ts of, uh, on the road, so. Yeah, it, it's definitely long overdue. Uh, I will have a copy for you guys next month of the SOP, so you guys can look at it, so you guys can understand. That way, if you have any questions about it, you can ask.
You'll have a copy of what?
Yeah, the new SOP. Uh, so, Ben, we, we've been with, there's been several meetings with the state and county officials regarding the eclipse that is happening on April eighth, twenty twenty-four, uh, expectation of, of, over a million people to impact central Indiana. Uh, central and northern Wayne County is gonna be a, a good viewing spot. I mean, pretty much anywhere in central Indiana is gonna be, you're gonna see the total eclipse. Uh, but the closer you are to that line, if you guys look at, look at your papers there, uh, I put you in a, it's from the, from the, from the DNR website. Then, pretty much anywhere in orange, you're gonna see a hu- a hundred percent of the eclipse. And then, the closer you are to the white line is, is gonna be the longer duration of it. So, we're pretty close to, uh, central and north, northern Wayne County is, is gonna be the, be the longest spot, so.
Why, why it goes through Wayne County?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be a big deal, and as we, as time goes on and we, we, we get closer to the eighth of April, we'll have a better understanding of what the county. What the, uh, what the county is planning, uh, I guess, I, I, I guess you know Hagerstown, they, they got, they probably got a flying in and everything else probably for that weekend, I imagine.
Well, I don't know, they're, I think they're gonna use all that for campsites down on airport area maybe, who knows? I don't know what they got planned.
So, well, and, you know, uh, most towns are just, just gonna be, you know, well, you're gonna see a lot more people in Wayne County that weekend, but it, it's on a Monday. And then that Monday will be the kind of like grand finale, and then it lasts us for about an hour, the whole event or a little over, and then you're gonna see a mass exodus of people and, uh, what the, the DNR guy says, like for, you know, for, for Indianapolis, it's gonna be like having eight Super Bowls in one weekend.
We have an idea on what the time is looking like on that?
One, you mean of the eclipse, it should, I thought it was on that paper there, it should be, I don't know, three o'clock or something, three?
Something like that.
Three oh seven or?
Yeah, something crazy.
But, yeah, it's gonna be in the afternoon, so you got probably, I would say that, like Richmond and Hagerstown, they probably won't even have school that day, it'll probably be like an E-learning day, because the traffic is just gonna be crazy. And, you know, they're looking at, you know, some factories there in, in Wayne County, uh, not even running that, that Monday, so. It, it'd be interesting to see, but you're gonna see more information coming out as, as we get closer to it, so. And then.
You're saying about three o'clock in the afternoon?
Uh, I, I think it was, it, there, there's a timeframe that gives you the exact minute, depending on where you're at, but yeah, it's, I wanna say it's like.
We get to scan the QR code, it says.
So, you know, there is, there is, there is worry about cellular service and things like that, not being, you know, with everybody and their brother, you know, you get mass population moving into an area, kind of overloading the, the towers, so. That's one of the concerns, I think, what they done down in Florida, not Florida, but, um, there in Kentucky, is that Verizon and AT&T actually brought in mobile, mobile towers for different areas to help, to help boost, sort of like what they done for the Super Bowl. They brought in towers and stuff there in Indianapolis to, to, to handle with the, the cellular traffic, so. But, it's, it's kind of interesting what, what, what all goes in to this thing, cause most people don't give a crap about the, the, uh, eclipse, but then you got people that travel all over, all over. And they said that this is a different crowd than like, say, people going to a movie concert where they had a bunch of trash and stuff. They said for most part, people cleaned up after themselves, they, their call volumes were actually lower than with, uh, than what they normally, um, experienced, so it, it'd be interesting to see how it works out, but next month, I'll have some more information.
Wow. Sounds like a party.
That's basically what they're trying to.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Parties make money. Vendors are parties make money, anybody can be a vendor, right?
Yeah, pretty much, if they got.
They're not, uh, county's not making people buy a vendor's license or anything, they can't, it's on their own.
Not so far, but I think for like food trucks and stuff, they might be having like food inspectors, I think.
I'd see that.
Yeah, but, I mean, that was kind of the biggest, we're ac- they're actually gonna be getting, getting help from other areas of the state as far as like the, like state food inspectors to help, cause I like Wayne County's got like three food inspectors or health inspectors or whatever. They're gonna be getting some from the state to come in and help them out, it's, it's, there's, there's gonna be a lot, a lot of state involvement.
Uh, you know, something like that could turn out to be just a great party, and, and something like that could also turn out to be a travesty if you're not careful.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, we just hope for the best. Anybody got any questions for Officer Bush? If not, I'll make a motion, we accept his, uh, report from last month.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same, thank you. Thanks, Rick, seeing we put twelve miles on the car, we're saving mileage on it.
It's kind of made up, buddy, for all them two mile per gallon that I did over the years.
Wastewater Treatment Plant monthly report, anybody got one they wanna talk about?
Nope.
Facilities coordinator, Doug Wheeler, hi Doug.
Well, hi, sir.
What's up? What's up with the facilities?
Facilities are okay.
What about that water part, that's facility.
That is a facility.
Yes, it is.
Not going back out there to it, there's boom.
Oh, no.
Nothing from facilities?
No, other than, uh, I mean, seriously about paving, um, you know, we need to, if we're gonna plan on doing anything as far as breaking a pay route, we need to start planning now.
Hey, we're talking primarily Main Street?
Main Street's the worst, if we don't do that, we've got a couple alleys that need to be hit. Uh, we are gonna take some regrind down behind the old church and around the backside of Plum and spread that regrind, some regrind back there on those, fill in the potholes.
Some that we have now.
Some of the regrind we got from, from thirty-eight.
Can we put reground in that, reground in that alley as a cemetery?
Not without peel, man, I'm gonna have to knock that up first.
Cause I know it's just also beautiful.
We, we really need to just go rent a grinder and go down the middle of that and then just run a strip of pavement down it.
I wonder if, to my knowledge, we've never done that since I've been involved.
No, that's never been repaired, it is to the place now that it's to.
I'm wondering if the cemetery will help with that, and I just need to help with that, I'm sure they probably have.
Is it their property?
Well, no, but they do use it.
Yeah, they use it, their people use it.
But you're saying the regrind behind whose church?
The one on Green Street, yeah.
Used to be church.
Yeah, it used to be church, um, and then off of Plum, or you go straight around that curve on Plum, that alley, or spread some regrind back there.
Um, Plum.
Yeah, go Plum.
Okay.
Go east on Plum to run out of road, and that turns into an alley.
Okay.
Hey, hey buddy, what are they gonna do with thirty-eight? There's, are they still gonna redo that or not?
Have not heard.
When I talked to the, I talked to the head engineer out here when they were paving it, they said they were still gonna try to tie that in with the, uh, I seventy project. But right now, because they put it on hold, he was trying to get something for Greens Fork, that's why they did the marshal paving job.
I was just wondering, are they gonna, so, if they're gonna do it right, they're gonna come and grind all that back up again, right? So, we'll have more regrind coming our way.
Supposedly, the, the job that Greens Fork was involved in, was it gonna be coming from one to thirty-five? Sidewalks, roads, streets, everything, curbs, the whole nine yards, but that was supposed to happen last year.
Yeah, well, the seventy project got kicked back, so they pushed it back further.
Now, seventy, they're wanting to widen that three lanes when we decided, correct?
They've been working on that effort since I started here.
Do you have any idea when they will?
Do not have a timeframe, he couldn't give me one.
Well, it's got to be somebody in planning office to know that.
Other than that, it's winter, everything's getting ready to freeze up, plant's gonna freeze solid here this weekend. It's gonna become poop sickle aglorin out there.
It's happened before, correct?
Every year.
Every year. Could we?
I've made one, tarp it.
Could we tie that into an eclipse somehow? I mean, you never know, let's get, let's get creative here, come on.
Come see your poop sickles.
Gosh, you're terrible.
Anybody got any questions for, uh, Facilities Coordinator?
That's a, that's a nice name.
Yeah, I know.
It's better what you probably.
I've been called a whole lot worse, so.
I think we all have. But they normally don't put you on Facebook like they do Nita and I.
I like dogs.
You got any questions? I'm making motions, we accept Doug's verbal report. Motion been made and properly seconded, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you Doug. Bob, what you got?
Couple things, uh, every year they, uh, get the, um. Have to turn in a, uh, report on, uh. Census Bureau, uh, for, C four oh four, and I do that. I just go online and take care of that report. And then, of course, FEMA has come out that all, uh, floodplain managers. Have to be certified and they are putting on a couple courses. Uh, one, I think is gonna be, uh, over the, uh, internet. And the other one, uh, is it, I think it's a two-week course in Emery, Maryland. All expenses are paid except for, uh, food and you have to supply.
Two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Two hundred and forty-five dollars for a meal ticket, and they do feed good, I've been up to Maryland several times with the fire department.
Do they fly you or you gotta drive?
Where's Maryland? No, 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 no.
And, uh, yeah, they, uh, they'll fly you or they'll pay you car expense.
Feds probably.
The feds.
Feds?
Are you going?
Well, I don't know yet. I'll have to decide.
It has to be, this, he is no longer with Hagerstown. So, we used to benefit somewhat from his ties with Hagerstown as far as. Them being a bigger entity, of course, uh, in full-time, if you will, building person. A lot of that, they paid him to do and then we just got to reap the benefits from it, which now we're gonna have to start spending some.
Well, just for food, right?
Yeah, for this one.
For this one.
Can I have a copy of that that you were talking about, let me see it?
Uh, I think there's an extra copy around here, ain't there? I'll get, I'll get her one. Yeah. Then there should be one of those around somewhere.
They're probably somewhere.
We'll get her, we'll get her. Yeah, that's when they state required it.
That all you got, Bob?
Uh, something else. North eleven, eleven North Main Street, they're going to convert. Uh, a room in there for a kitchen to, uh, have a cookie. Store where they're gonna sell cookies, there's gonna be no seats in there or not, she's just gonna bake cookies and. Pies and stuff like that.
It used to be what that was anyway, it was a place where they packaged candy, if you remember. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking right here.
Trying to think of why that number was so familiar.
Yeah, your mom and dad.
Never mind.
Yeah, eleven North Main Street. And then, of course, we've discussed, uh, sewer lines and.
Now, and they went, that's something, they'll have to go through the county on also, right?
They are, they, Health, uh.
Health Department?
Department, I'll get with the fire chief to see where he wants. Where he wants fire extinguishers and if he needs any exit lights or anything, but they will not have any. They'll just have a in and outdoors sales.
What do you mean in and outdoors sales?
They'll have a shelf or something.
Just a carryout.
It'll be a carryout.
Carryout.
Order and carry it out. You'll be able to order, you'll be able to go in.
Order and carry out. Do you have a special license in for this?
Had to be through the Health Department.
And you're gonna get with Doug on what?
Fire extinguisher locations.
Fire extinguishers. What all they need in that line.
Anything else? Bob, got anything else?
Nope.
Anybody got any question for Bob? How's the, uh, the new home zone carriage coming?
Uh, last time I seen him, but, uh, they were, they hadn't started framing yet, I don't know.
Well, they had the walls up on one of them.
Backing up on the roof, they got trusses up.
Cause I haven't been through there.
That's on the one that's.
Yeah, the back one.
East.
Yeah, it should be the east one, they haven't broke ground for the.
I haven't been there for, I think last Friday was the last time I was through there.
They got walls up and decking up on the roof and.
They're working it.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see it.
They might take a break.
If they don't have no ears.
What are they doing with the, the place up here they've been fixing up, the, they're next to the tracks?
Oh, Bill Tandy?
He, uh, I, I done, he's electric, his electric is done, uh, and they're just.
What's he gonna be though?
His shop, basically.
This is shop, okay.
Matter of fact, he, uh, before he put, if you drive by, there's like a picture window right there. Before he, uh, put up that black plastic there, he's got a forty-six Ford sitting there, I thought it was pretty cool. He said there's another, he's kind of a collector of vehicles, if you will, he's got some nice cars up there on Elm Street. And I think he's gonna put them in there, excuse me?
What kinda shops are gonna be?
Just his personal.
Yeah, just.
Shop shop, you know, like a. If, yeah, he's thinking about putting in, he's on no wind, but he's thinking about.
Yeah, it's, it's looking nice.
Oh, yeah.
Then that house over here behind Ramsey's looking good too.
Yeah.
The one down Main Street's not looking good?
Ramsey's.
Twenty North Main, it's, uh, it's got the siding and everything done on the outside.
Yeah, that's looking good.
Uh, I'll tell my son, you said it wasn't nice, but the other two were, see.
Haven't been down that way.
Oh, you gotta go all over this town, you gotta walk it three times a day, that's part of the job.
I think I've only seen it once so far, haven't been back over that way yet. Because I think we saw it when we were walking with the baby or thing, now it's kinda cool.
Yeah, cool, you have a baby, she's probably walking it, but.
Oh, yeah, she probably would, but.
Fire chief does have a question, what do you get?
Hi, I'm getting ready, okay. What you got?
Okay, fire chief. Do you guys ever do anything with the burner ordinance?
No, we kinda, I'll be honest with you, we stopped, uh, uh, we had a rough time having all of us together at one time. Uh, there's a couple things in there that, uh, we knew aren't gonna fly, aren't gonna work.
Will we just make the changes?
Oh, we will, we'd have to, I mean, you can't expect somebody to pay a thousand dollars for a bad third when they don't pay the sewer bill.
You're not expecting them to pay a thousand dollars, if you read it closely, that's second, that's second offense.
That's the thing.
And that's the reason why it's a thousand, so there's not a second offense, cause we don't want their money, we just don't want them to do it.
We've been having issues with the existing fire, with the existing fire thing we have now.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have anything to stand on because we don't have an ordinance, but, you know, we got the twenty-five dollar fine. Seriously, twenty-five dollars, I'd pay it, just to see if I could make the fire chief mad. I mean, seriously, that's people's attitudes.
We have, I mean, how come they've not done a hit thing?
They have done it, they have done it, we've put, we've put them out numerous times.
But they weren't fined, so.
You weren't around.
There's a finer right there.
I wasn't in charge that night.
We did, we have, uh, issued a fine for somebody burning an appropriate.
If, if you look at how that's worded, that's worded, if we have, if you relight it and we come back, you're getting, you're getting the fine. That's the reason it's, that's why it's, see, we don't have to go back, you go tell them, you gotta put it out, hand them the ordinance. We put it out, we leave, we don't come back, and they don't redo it.
We will, uh.
But we can adjust that number.
Oh, yeah, I, I, we know that, uh, we, I'll be honest with you, just have it, taking the time, and we will, we need to.
I'd like to do it with all the board members here and him present.
Yeah, and the reason I bring that up is cause it's not gonna be long, we're gonna be in that season again.
And revise it, everything while everybody's here. And it'd be, I think it'd be easier to do if everybody's here.
Next month's board meeting. Everybody be together unless you want a special meeting.
I don't think that needs a special meeting.
We just gotta sit down with everybody here and.
Uh, well, we'll see if we get the chance to look at it prior to the meeting, we'll put it on the agenda.
Has everybody got copies?
Uh, I'm sure we do, I'm, yeah, I'm almost positive we do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm leaving it here, ordinance really, they even open it, until it happens.
Anything else?
Well, we talked about the humps, huh, so we wanna.
If, if you wanna do the humps, that's fine.
Well, we got Nita first, we.
Yeah, I mean, but if you wanna talk about the humps.
Well, we can't really do it until springtime anyway, even if.
If you wanna do the humps, that's fine, we can do the humps, however, you need to know, it's not gonna be long for their peeling up. Because the underpavement's letting loose.
Won't hold them, is that what you say?
Yeah, we're gonna see more after this next freeze. You know, how bad the pavement decides to bubble on us and what the plow does to it.
Well, in worst case, if we can't get the money, and could do it when it all piles up, we won't need speed humps, cause it'd be such a rush.
They're gonna have slow down.
We'll pour down gravel and.
You say the underwater?
The under pavement, the pavement, pavement is gonna let loose its adhesion.
It won't hold the humps.
Yeah.
Okay, Sewer Utility Monthly Income Dispersment reading.
You guys wanna pay for your board or not, does it matter?
I thought I did, uh, I'll, I'll make the motion, we approve Bob's, uh, verbal report. A written report too, I guess, motion been made and proper seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed say the same, motion carried, thank you, Bob, thank you, Scott. Okay, Nita?
Yeah, in December, we took in fifteen thousand and, uh, almost spent twelve. For the year, we have, uh, spent probably eleven thousand more than what we've taken in. That is even with our sewer leens. We got, uh, paid for twenty-four sewer leens, which come up to, uh, four thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars. In December, that's twenty-four sewer leens that, uh, Card Cruiser will have to release. We're doing a lot better on the sewer leens there, we've only got twenty-four now that's left to be paid to, uh. Wayne County Treasurers Department, that's a low number for us, this is good. There are a lot of work, but it's really paid off, we've got the list out here, the last ten years of sewer lane collections. And it would've been hard to do without that, in two thousand twenty-three, we took in thirty, seventy-two hundred dollars and. Twenty-two, we took in forty-three, twenty-one, we took in almost, uh, thirty-nine, and twenty, we took in almost five thousand. And in two thousand nineteen, we took in almost eleven thousand, and in eighteen, we took in thirteen thousand, and two thousand seventeen, we took in almost two hundred. Uh, two thousand sixteen, we took in almost nine thousand, and two thousand fifteen, we took in almost eleven thousand. And two thousand fourteen, we took in almost, uh, eight thousand, so without the sewer leens, going after them, staying on top of it. We'd be missing out on a lot of money, there are a lot of work. Uh, putting on and, and then releasing them too, to keep them trapped, it's a big job, but it sure pays off. Uh, we have a overdue in sewer and overdue in crack, but we also have several customers that's paid out ahead. I have two accounts here that's paid out the whole year, paid out through two thousand twenty-five, January. And several people pay in advance, and that's, that's good, we don't have to worry about it.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's say, uh, we've got a, a couple people, like you just said, that have paid out through to all of two thousand twenty-five, what if it goes up? Are they gonna think they don't have to pay?
I have no idea.
I wouldn't say.
They're paid out through January two thousand twenty-five, I got two.
They would pay the amount of the increase.
Yeah.
My question was, do they think they are not gonna have to pay that, that was some of the way I worded that.
Yeah, but if there is an increase, uh, it would show on their billing, you know, they wouldn't have as much credit as what they would think they would, you know.
Right, yeah, their credit would just get, get, get ate up easier.
Yes, sir, uh-huh, yeah.
We just have to, but do they still get a monthly?
Oh, yes, I send them a bill, so they know.
So then you just put it, like, add it on there for them.
Yeah, they can keep track of what, you know, they're paid ahead, yeah, yeah, it just deducts.
So, we're covered then.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my question is, do they know this?
No.
I haven't discussed, uh.
I think they need to know that, in the event of a raise that, that, that don't mean there's paid all the way through. I mean, I can see someone saying, now, wait a minute, you know? I just think that, that, when someone does that, they need to be aware, in the event there is a, not that there is or isn't.
Yeah.
That does not lock the price.
Exactly.
Well, I guess I would just, if I were paying it, I would never assume that my rate was locked in.
No, not on something like that.
I wouldn't, but you have a good point, there are some, there are some people who'd argue it just to argue it.
Exactly.
They didn't believe it.
But if there's a, if there's a rate increase, the whole town's gonna know about it.
Everybody's gonna get it if they're down.
Well, you just put it on the, on that little monthly bill, yes, uh, new increase, you put like, maybe ahead of time before we did. You put sewer rates to increase, whatever, six months or whatever, whatever it ends up being.
Well, they'll see.
And then they can't say anything.
You'll see it on your bill, it gets a new.
Yeah, or actually, you could just put the exact date that the increase was gonna start on the.
But they'll hear about it way before.
Well, yeah, cause I think the whole town gets notified if there's gonna be a rate increase.
We gotta have the rate consultant come in and tell us what we already know.
Yeah, yeah, we can probably know, you know what we need, but, uh, we gotta pay three, four thousand dollars to.
Now, that was ten years ago.
So, we're not gonna pay any increases.
Well, I mean, pumps have tripled in price, I mean, you know, everything's.
Everything. Close to living has gone up.
Yeah.
And that's the living.
Go to the grocery store.
I did, my wife and I went with her the other day, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
We're doing it.
Yeah, and that'd probably be ten days, we'll be going back. Alright, anybody got any question for Nita?
Good job, Nita, and, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We need, we need more months.
I don't think you did it. No.
We need more Decembers.
We need them.
We need more of the Decembers.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, just, are you a praying man? Are you a praying man? Well, you might wanna start, pray nothing breaks.
And guess what, this is the breaking season.
Yeah, this is the breaking season.
I'm a realist, I'm pretty sure things are gonna break, this is how it goes. Alright, then I'll make a motion, we, you're not Nita, dear, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, no, if you're not.
We had people that paid ahead in December, so that, that done it, that means maybe some of the months this year are gonna be less, you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it sounded good till you said that.
Yeah, it sounded real good, uh, at the get-go, but then I'm gonna miss their payments, cause it's already here, you know.
Yeah, unless we can jack it before they're due again, and we give more money. I'll make a, I'll make a motion, we've sent Nita's report.
I'll second.
Motion been made and proper seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed say the same. All opposed say aye. Motion carried, thank you. Alright, street commissioner, what you got for the streets?
Well, let's hear it.
I didn't know it, man.
Are they still black?
Grayish.
Some of the colors. You alright?
Uh, I'm still fighting a cold, I got that chest congestion on.
I think it's kinda calming right now.
Yeah, and can't take off from work, 'cause my supervisor's out with that flu, won't be back till Tuesday. Doctor won't release her. We're a little shorthanded, we're supposed to have five people, we got two.
Where you work?
Sheriff Department.
That's where I seen you at.
Yeah, I'm at the courthouse.
That's where I seen you, Matt. At least I wasn't in cuffs that day.
Not that day anyway. Not that day anyway.
I don't think I've ever seen you with cuffs.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
I see a lot of people.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
Doug, I, I got some questions.
Yeah.
Uh, on twelve-five, that would be December the fifth, correct?
Correct.
They helped Doug, do you know, what they did, they helped you. Wayne helped you, and let's see if, I don't know if Rick helped you too.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's know.
That's my point, I keep bringing this up, time after time, Scott, I brought it up to Scott last, and I'm sure he, he wants to meet him and probably go over some things. But, uh, this reporting worth papers, so.
I'd say something. I mean, I try to help you.
Oh, I know, I know you do, I know you do. I, I think we need to figure out something, and I'll try to get with him. Well, he's gonna, one guy's gonna be taking off here on us pretty soon.
Well, the other guy maybe too.
Yeah.
He usually does this time of year.
See, you think about, we're all part-time. Everybody's got something else. Wayne, bless his heart, he's, he's part-time vacationer and part-time.
Well, he's seventy, what, seventy?
Something more than us, seventy-three-ish.
Seventy-three or seventy-four.
That's young.
That's young, yeah, it is.
It's not, it's not young considering the type of work we do at times.
Right. Right.
Ain't nobody knows what it's like till they get on the back of that paper.
Now, we need to get Scott out there and let him help you.
Oh, we initiate him.
Yeah, you gotta get him out there.
We had Buddy on the end of the shovel in front of the paper.
Oh, yeah.
We moved a lot of asphalt. How about the bucket detail coming up out of the plant?
Oh, yeah, how's that?
Remember the buckets of, of crap?
I still got.
Buddy took a faceful that day. We were out there till midnight. That is another thing with the plant, that we're gonna have to figure out. Uh, it's gonna have to come offline again, it's been that long. And we're gonna have to clean those, the aeration tank.
Did I, you and I were not?
Yeah. The aeration's a brown bubbly one. At some point, it's gonna have to come offline, because what happens down around the aerators, we call them mop heads, but all the products that are flushed, they turn into these big stringy mops, and they get hung around those, and they will literally break the aerators loose from the bottom of the floor.
And that's what we, we had to replace a bunch of aerators.
We had to replace a bunch on the last time, uh, and it's coming up on that time, but we're gonna have to start planning to get it offline again.
I'm thinking probably with spring or summer.
Maybe.
Hopefully, hopefully we last that long.
Yeah. No, you don't want to ever do that.
What you have to do, you gotta drain it down, so you gotta have, uh.
Big frac tanks.
Big frac tanks sitting there, that.
You gotta a back truck come in, and, and then you gotta get down in there, and we usually take the tanker out too, and use it for hose down and.
Now, is House still, not House, but?
House doesn't have a big enough apparatus to suck the mop heads out, so we have to have Kewery come in and do that.
Now, is that what happened last time, when we take the fence down, and have a bunch of money put in the fence?
To get the frac tanks in, yeah.
You're saying it has to happen soon?
It's not, probably this year.
This year?
Yeah, it's.
Well, we can do it this year, if we can just wait till spring.
I don't wanna wait till spring.
Yeah.
I don't wanna do it now. I'm putting it out there to know that it's something that we need to plan on making happen.
I'm definitely more about proactive stuff. Like, do it after, 'cause it always costs more if you wait till after.
Costs me more personally, too. It sucks.
Okay, we seen the guys did do some work this month on the streets, so, alright, streets are still there, so, everything must be good, alright? I'm making motion we accept the street, uh.
Hey, how do you, uh, how many hours do you even have on?
You, uh, you have, that, that's what I was telling you last month. There's time in, time out here, they have never filled it out. I've never had a street commissioner, until now, I hope, that would, uh, make them do what we've asked the street commissioner to have them do for the last five years. That's why this is, form is made the way it is, the date, time in, time out. My thing is, help Doug. Doug's so busy, he don't know how long they helped him or nothing, I mean, he can't answer that. Uh, but if you wanna pull their time card, uh, you can bounce it off, we shouldn't have to do that. Shouldn't have to do that. I ain't mad at them, I like them, believe it or not, but it just, it can be aggravating. They're not, they're not bad guys, they're really not, they're good guys, I like them both, but.
But they do work hard.
Well, when it's time to work hard, they work hard, but when it's time to not, they goof off just like anybody else makes ten dollars an hour, and you can't blame them. I don't blame them.
No, I'm just saying. Basically, the only issue is, we need to have the times on here.
Well, I think it would just make it a lot easier for us. Uh, and then that way, you can look at these times and bounce it off their time card.
Time, all their time cards though, are they in here?
Yeah, they're in there.
Well, they're here. Now, sometime, if they're doing something at the sewer plant, it'd be marked sewer plant.
They'd be on sewer.
Paying streets out of the town, or sewer, anything, doing sewer, coming out of sewer cap.
They'll have two separate cards. If it's sewer, one for sewer and one for streets.
See you next month.
See you, Bob.
Bob, thank you, sir. I'll see that tomorrow, turn around here again. Utility, utility supplies.
Yeah, that's a nice hat.
Did they give away it? Christmas.
Here.
Yeah.
Avery Dennison.
Put that back on.
Did that blind the camera there? I'm sorry if it did. Alright, I'm making motion we accept the, uh, days that they work on the town. Well, I don't think, I don't think, you can't even call a street report. We'll work on it. Oh, and I will, uh, I know Wayne's getting ready to take off for seventeenth, till, uh, probably the first week in March. Uh, so, when is the seventeenth?
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday. I'll try to pop in. Yeah, if we don't do it Monday or Tuesday, it's gonna have to be postponed till March timeframe. I'll see if we, I can get, but it's just hard to get them.
Well, Monday, I actually have off, 'cause.
Oh, I'm, I do too. Well, what, oh, that's right, it's a holiday, but that's my day off anyway. They will probably be here, I'm sure, they come in on insignificant holidays, if you will. I will come down, check off the here and all, I said, we'll, I'll take you down.
'Cause that way I could actually meet them, because. I can't get off right now, there's no way.
We've got enough people leaving the ship over there.
Yeah, we're, we're down to two to finish out this week. Because, uh, Missy's sick, so.
Well, Officer Bush ain't doing nothing, little bar. He got dog ears. Okay.
It hurt his name.
Okey-dokey. Yeah, the speed humps, like I said, we're gonna put that off spring either way, if we can even do it then.
But you're, you're suggesting we probably need to do the paving.
We'll know more after this next freeze, on how bad that paving.
Go bad, and I'll slow them down.
Yeah, I mean, it.
Yeah.
I, I, just by, I drove, went, checked in the other day, started looking at Main Street. You get out and walk, and it's getting.
But we're not gonna have enough money probably to do that whole street.
Well, we can do half of it, we may look at that.
That's what we did the last time.
Yeah, do one half, do the other half, um.
The following years.
Yeah.
We did South Main last, and.
No, that was, uh, that was, we did North Main last year. Or two years ago, we did North Main. And we ground the edges and, and repaved North Main, and we did yours, we did the Mayor, Mayor Earl Drive.
That's right, by the Mayor Earl Mansion.
We did that one, and we did North Main. Um, and that was two years ago.
When do we do green? 'Cause we did green.
Green, we paved milestone.
Yeah.
To lay green.
Yes.
Was it like sixty thousand dollars?
Uh, yeah, a little more than that.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, we did North Main, that was our second street, we have, or, south of the tracks on South Main. That was our second road we did. We did Water Street was the first one we paved, and that's been, Dad was alive.
That was the, uh, experiment, that's the, the learning street, and it came out real nice.
Yeah, that was almost nine years ago.
Wow.
And we did that, we did Main Street the following year.
But Main Street gets a lot more.
That's when Warner Rex, uh, reservists drove the roller.
Drove the roller off the edge of the road, down, almost down in the river, we had to.
Yeah, Jack. It was Jack and Dan.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause Dad was still alive when we, when we first started paving, so that's been.
We're gonna blame Jack for teaching, telling Dad it was okay to drive.
On the grass.
Well, he jumped on there, he said, I wanna drive, Dad's like, okay.
That's what he said to me when I wanted to drive it. Okay, we've talked about the speed humps, dog issue, South Main. Uh, Rick says something about it in his report, I forget what it was.
That's a dog.
I don't know, have they, have they gotten loose again?
I've heard that it's been loose, but I haven't personally seen it.
I go out to my shed sometimes, the side of my house, there's that one box, I mean, act like it's gonna come over, and I, I look to see if it's on a leash, 'cause it don't wanna come over my house when I'm out there, 'cause I'm not in a good mood anyway, and I gotta go out there and do something. So, it's, they're still alive, both of them.
You don't think they're a problem now, a big problem?
Oh, I think that they're gonna get loose again, I, I think that's gonna be a problem.
I think the biggest issue is if somebody's out walking their dogs, then the dogs wanna cross.
Right.
The road, all the way across. Yeah, because.
I don't know what happened when she went to court.
This is the same dog that?
I don't know.
Did white dogs?
That, didn't bite him?
No, no. Long time gone, that one is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'd have to try to see if I can't look it up in the system, but I don't know her name.
Melissa, uh, Melissa Adams, her name? Or Adama, or, that was something funny, as far as the, the last name. Melissa something.
Adams?
Three twenty something, um.
Yeah.
'Cause without the, the name, I'm not gonna be able to look that thing up, even.
Adams, Melissa Adams, L-E-A-N-S, M-E-R-S-A.
That's confirmed?
Yep, she just said Adam, three twenty seven, three twenty six.
Three twenty five or something.
Oh, I don't need that, I just look on the public.
Well, she, she asserts names, that's, that's what she does.
I would just be levent the public access.
Is the IFD and, uh, Darla Paul's property, isn't it?
Well, I don't know whose property it is.
Yep.
I think she's bonded on contract.
Yes.
The property wouldn't matter to me, all I'd be looking at is the, my case.
Okay. Well, Melissa, I have him somewhere, pretty sure I can look it up, you don't need to.
Uh, before we, before we leave.
Yeah.
New business. Now, let me back up, uh, we do need to try to, uh, go over the, uh, open burning regulation, and we can talk about it, if, if you go over it, and I'll go over it. Uh, Kathy may have already looked at it, if, uh, we feel we need to have an executive session, we can do that, if not, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
How is Kathy, by the way?
Well, she's, uh, she called today, she still have some issues, and, uh, so she, uh, regretfully had to, has to be excused, she's, uh, well, she didn't ask, she just said, I can't make it, and I understand that, so, uh, we'll work on it, see how it goes next month.
But you don't think you need an executive session, because you said you'd just do it in a meeting, didn't you?
It would be a work session, not an executive session. You don't wanna talk about ordinance in the executive session.
No. But it could be in a regular meeting.
Well, I mean, if you wanted to just spend time to, you gotta, you gotta have a work session, you guys can work on it, do what you guys need to do.
Then let me know, and I'll bring my laptop and make changes, what we need to make changes to it.
Yeah, I'd just like to have everybody there, and just sit down, just knock it out, and be done with it.
Well, because the, here's what's gonna happen, when the, when the town gets it done, then the township's gonna do the same thing. So we want the two to match. That way, wherever we go in our, in our area, we're handing the, the homeowners the same ordinance. And there's not two separate.
Kinda let the new guy know, anytime an ordinance is rewritten, it is highly suggested that, uh, the town attorney is involved.
Yeah.
Two hundred and forty-five dollars a year, fifty, whatever he charges, I've spent so long, uh.
We could run it by him.
Well, yeah, finalize first, and then run it by him.
Right, right, I'm just letting him know how that.
Oh, yeah. Make sure we made all the legal criteria of it, yeah.
We could email it too, or I could drop it off to him, or whatever, you know.
In the past, we normally.
I see him all the time.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure you do.
In the past, we normally just, uh, would adopt.
Usually every Thursday.
Another town's ordinance that worked.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it's already been through the, through that process, and.
Alright, new business, charity bonds council signed.
Okay, I got them right here, before we take them to Wayne County, they have to be signed by you guys. I made a place sign at the bottom to sign, there's one for me and one for Brenda. Then we have to take them and have them recorded.
Who's that, Levins?
Yes. Yeah, we have to take them up to the clerk.
Alright.
So, to Debbie?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta take them to Debbie, and then we have to, uh, take them over and have them recorded.
These are all the buildings I'm responding to.
Debbie's a real nice lady.
Hmm, I just think this'll be her last year.
Oh, really?
Think she's retiring.
Oh, I'll miss her, she's, she's knowledgeable.
But I think, uh, what's her name, Melanie, her?
Sister.
Yeah, I think she's, she said she was gonna run, so I was just gonna vote for her. She's, she's gonna have the necessary experience.
We'll just go ahead with it, just two sign and it gave me that, I think.
I think so.
They just, they've been, you guys are aware of it.
Annual certification, internal controls, nepotism policy, uh, appendix C and D. Annual certification, internal controls, nepotism policy, uh, appendix C and D, Council Kathy Campbell.
Okay, she wasn't here last month to sign, so I'm still gotta hear for her to sign.
Okay.
Okay, that's, well, that was just for her to sign?
Yes, right, you, you and Scott signed them in, uh, December.
Yep.
Yep.
I thought we did.
Yep, you did.
Janice Roberts' contract for annual report and budget.
There you go.
Janice, the lady that was here.
Oh, yeah.
She does our, uh, budget for us.
She had another meeting tonight and couldn't come, she thought she'd come, but she had another meeting. She does full reports for us.
Yeah, she does a pretty good job on that.
She, she was part treasurer, sent her up for twenty years. And she is a real good, real good person. Real qualified. I don't think we have to have a motion for that, did you just sign it?
No, I don't think so. Well, you know, it never hurts to, let's do it, I'll make the motion that, uh, uh. Under her contract, uh. Which is at sixty dollars an hour for the forward portion she does, based on the hours, four, four, four and twelve.
I'll second that. Second that, is it?
I think it takes a lot more hours than that, that's what she does.
What are you gonna say, I bet it does.
Oh, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah, she just puts those down, because it takes her a lot more hours than that, yeah.
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 So, I'll make the motion that we accept this, cause she's always been good to us and I don't know why she would start being bad now.
Second that.
We'll just make it.
Okay.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, I'll, if ever say, aye.
Aye.
All folks say the same. Motion carried, thank you.
Did you say name?
Hey.
All right, next thing, approval, council meeting positions for twenty twenty-four.
What was that?
Positions, uh, which, which, in the past, for the, for the past nineteen years, it's, we just left them all the same. I'm the town board president, that seat is the street commissioner, this seat is the police commissioner. Uh, I'd say, for now, leave them like they are, is my recommendation.
Your motion?
Unless you wanna. Bet somebody ain't here, can't defend herself in the hot seat. I'll make the motion that, uh, we, uh, this town positions, uh, remain the same for this year. All right, you don't have to, I mean, yeah, just talk, I mean, you don't have to, we got a tiebreaker, if we have disagreed, uh.
Brenda stepped in.
Ms. Brenda will straighten this, straighten this all out, trust me.
Let me ask this question.
Okay.
What if you? Motion to keep them as they are currently until?
Until, yeah, it, it, it.
It doesn't have to be for the whole year, you guys can revisit it when all three of you are here.
Yeah, exactly.
That makes more sense to me.
Or it's just like, you know, if, if somebody's gone, evidently, they can't be in that position, so whoever comes in doesn't necessarily have to accept a position.
Leave the same until?
Cause I've got a plan in my mind if that happens, attitude anyway.
Table changing, does that sound right, table changing the?
Write it down.
Need to write it down.
I would just.
Changing the positions until all three council members are available.
Okay.
Works for me.
Table the approval.
Table approval.
Yes.
Works for me.
Okay.
If you wanted to be fair and not do anything without the third one being here.
Well, it's, it'll turn out to the same, but that's, that's understand, it's okay.
Table approval until all.
We're not gonna throw nobody under the bus.
Well, if something were to happen that she continues to be ill. And someone else comes in, like you said.
Exactly.
So, we are going to not make the motion to leave them the same, we're just gonna table them until all.
We're gonna leave them temporarily the way they are.
Yes, but we will need to do it at some point, because we're supposed to.
First time we all three are here, we could just put it on the agenda for that evening. Internal controls corrective action plan under review. Didn't, didn't we go over this?
Yes, and we've, we're trying things, we're trying to put some things in place, but in my opinion, you guys can do what you like, but in my opinion, we need to know it's gonna work. Consistently before we put a big plan out there that we can't do.
Okay, okay.
So, we're trying to just make sure.
And we did try to implement something effective, what, two days ago? Was a deposit.
Yes.
There was a, uh, concern of safer accounts.
Yeah.
Uh, what we did was, I came down here, Nita had, uh, Nita normally is the one that gets the money, counts the money, deposits the money. Uh, and they feel under internal controls, that there should be another set by. So, what we did.
That, that just protects her and.
Yeah, I never open up an envelope that says it has cash in it without somebody else opening it up, but, uh, Bud come up with this plan here where. Uh, he could make some of the deposits, so I've got a deposit here for him to make. And he signs off on the, uh, deposit slip here and he signs off on the receipts. And here you go.
And then walks away with it, so if.
Do we have, like, something, like, where two people just initial or sign off, that, hey, this is what I got in this?
No, and that's.
Her and I, that's what, her and I.
We could come up with a log book, but initially the.
Receipts?
Re- the.
Yeah, just something like that, yeah.
Because, and receipts, because we're retaining those here.
Yeah, as long as we getting the two initials or two signatures.
And, you know, if, if you're willing and would like to, I know that you go to Richmond every day, correct?
He drive across the street, yeah, also from the bank.
Yeah, you, you could, if you wanted to, as a spot checker randomly, you could take it, come up and take it, grab a deposit, sign off on it and take it, if you wanted to. You don't have to, but that's just the second, third check to buy, so that you guys all know what's coming and going.
Well, I'd have a hard time picking up the check. I, somebody would almost have to pray it to me.
Oh, okay.
Cause I'm gonna be at work already.
Oh, you're one of them. I got you.
Unless you're gonna open up recording for me.
So, Mom, Mom had it ready the night before for Buddy.
Oh, okay.
He stopped, ran up here, grabbed it and took it.
Okay, here's one I got ready.
I see, I see what you're saying. I was just like, well, I can't take off work to come back here to get it.
No, 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 no.
Right, 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 I, uh, come get it, take it home, sometime, you know, I figure, you know, it's Friday night, Anderson Hall, I know, and double it.
And then he, he double it and donates the rest.
But I really wouldn't go do it while I'm at work, cause.
You don't get lunch half hour?
Uh, policy, I, I can't work for two.
Well, you're not.
You're not working.
It's volunteer.
Sure as heck ain't getting paid for it, so that ain't working, right?
I had to keep them separate.
I said, I'm just right there anyway.
And Mom, Mom.
Yeah, the sheriff is on here.
Anybody can come up here and look at him and help sign off, if that's what it is.
Yeah, I've sat with your sheriff a couple times.
Walks out the door with us.
I've sat with your sheriff a couple times.
These are pigs, you know, stuff like that, so I, I gotta be careful, I've had conversations with your sheriff, too.
Okay.
We're buddies.
I'm not saying mine was a bad conversation either.
I, I like Randy.
Here's something, Nita's got something.
Okay, this is, uh, what we got from the state, this is our, uh, cigarette tax, uh, general and C C I F tax and our local roads and streets and our M V H. I got five receipts here, cause your M V H, half of it has to go into restricted and half of it goes into regular. So, here is the amounts that we got, and Bud has been signing off and checking each one of these receipts against the letter that we got through the mail from the state. He done that at the last meeting, he checked off on those, you wanna do it now, here's the receipts, there's five receipts there.
Any of the three of you are welcome to help, or two, the other two are welcome to help Bud with this, if you're around, convenient and you're interested and wanna look and.
She makes me look, I don't have a choice.
Well, if, if, yeah, she opens it up, I don't open up.
That way, everybody's protected.
I, I do not, either you or.
I walk in here and she's like, come here, I need you, you gotta count this money.
Have you been forging my, my initials, Nita?
I did.
You guys.
I think as long as any, as long as the two employees do it, they're fine.
Yeah, I don't think it matters to you.
No, it doesn't.
No.
She just ropes us all in now.
Yeah, because I'm not gonna open it though.
Well, and Mom and I both are bonded.
Yeah.
Rick's bonded, I, no, Rick is not bonded, he doesn't have to be, is that right, is that right, Rick?
What, being bonded?
Yeah, you don't have to be, do you?
No.
But Mom and I both are actually bonded.
Yeah, you guys, once I stop taking, uh, handgun license money, I don't take, I don't handle money anymore.
Yeah, there's five receipts.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean.
Better yet.
He's one of all the receipts.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll check against what we got in there.
It is kinda weird, though, that, I knew you just bought a brand new car.
I know, I know. Is it money spanking you?
Pay cash for it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The car costs more than what she's bonded for, so she didn't take money.
Is it brand, brand new, Nita?
It's brand new.
I'm confused right here, you send me five receipts. Is that a receipt you're talking about, or you're talking about these sheets?
You mean five receipt of payments?
Oh, I got you, okay.
And then here's a receipt for eight, eight forty.
Eight two forty-one, I can, I can read the numbers and all that right now, I'm smart like that. Six nineteen four point four five, that's like four five cents.
And see, here's your.
Three oh two.
Yeah, there's your three oh two, okay.
Okay, there's eighty-two forty-one.
Okay.
There's your five oh three eighty-two, six nineteen is down here.
Yeah.
Oh, for six nineteen, maybe six nineteen.
Yeah.
Brown car.
You have to split that, half of those on the server, uh, not restricted, half of it restricted and regular account. So, the six nineteen, six nineteen, you got two receipts for them.
I cut out all the blues, so nobody can flip them on.
Here you got three oh two, three oh two, eighty-two, eighty-two, five oh three, five oh three, then you added those two together.
So, you didn't add that.
To make sure it come up. Uh, but then you.
It's just a lot less confusing.
Oh, yeah, I had that, the head was bad, the control head. Sometimes it would come on, sometimes it wouldn't, so I put a new, uh, control head on it.
That's not for initials, girl.
Now, I've got another one.
I got, uh, two S C B As in the trunk, I got a med pack in the trunk, uh, and an A D. So, it's ready to move people.
This is from the county. We got property, general property taxes, twenty-four thousand dollars, we got auto and aircraft for seventy-eight hundred. And then we got, uh, our sewerling, uh, pay, our special assessments here for forty-six hundred ninety-four dollars. And here's, here's where it tells you what you got. You got twenty-four and general property.
And you add that to it.
And you add that to it.
You're gonna come up with that.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So, you're gonna provide me a calculator for this job, or I gotta buy my own?
No, we got one for it.
Sorry.
I don't need it, I have it back.
Take, take your shoes off, buddy.
Right.
Use your toes.
Cool.
Take your shoes off, use your toes.
And, uh, you don't have that.
My wife don't allow me to take my shoes off in public.
Okay, just initial that.
We'll get you a calculator.
I like the mission.
He's got a phone.
He has calculators on, your phone has calculator on.
Why should I have to use mine for the town, why should I waste my battery life?
And then this receipt number, it costs seventy-one, it's for forty-six hundred forty-three, this is for the sewerling and, yeah.
And these are all listed by name, you just do that for your own.
For our record, yeah.
Did we ever get more cameras?
Huh?
Did we ever get more cameras?
We got two cameras on the shelf, don't we?
Yeah.
That's what.
We got two extra cameras.
They're telling us that we got it.
Where we gonna, general, put, where we gonna put them up?
Uh, sewer right here is forty-six.
No. We're gonna do, we're gonna do anything in here to?
I was gonna say, why don't we have one in here facing that?
Initial right here.
That window over there.
Okay.
Facing out?
No, facing this window.
Like, face this whole area?
Yeah, cover this whole area. There are people coming in that door and standing there, just in case.
Look out the money.
Somebody did something stupid.
Put that foot over there, face that way.
Or this corner, go to that one.
Yeah.
We're ready for warrants. Can look at them, please. You didn't know we had cigarette tax money, did you?
Slow month. People quitting smoking.
No, I meant, we don't have no water.
I quit five years ago, so I cheated you guys out some money, didn't I?
Having that to you.
Me too.
Yep. Your lungs are probably thanking you today.
Did I understand that chemicals were bought? Did I understand that chemicals were bought in like November or December? At sewer plant?
No, shouldn't have been, it was probably early October, chemicals were bought.
Do we need them to be bought in October?
We needed, we needed enough to last through the month.
Okay, did we get too many?
Oh, yeah, filled both tanks. I got a tank, and we had to keep running the sodium bisulfite till it was gone, um, because it just turns into crystallize, but I've got a hundred and sixty gallons of chlorine that is off gassing. So, when we get ready to go back online, I'm gonna have to separate it, move it into the other tank and try to mix them together to get enough potency to be able to use it.
So, we, I, cause I didn't see it, I didn't see a bill, I thought there was some ordered and we didn't need them, and I didn't see a bill for it, so that's why I asked.
It, it, it came in in October, uh.
Would that have been to use if we didn't?
Yeah, but more than.
If November was a summer month, we would have used it all?
No, November first, we're offline.
I know that, I know that, but I'm just saying, was it the amount that would have been good for a month of summer use?
Yes, it would have been, well, yeah, well, it would have been a month and a half, probably with the chlorine. The chlorine didn't need any to be brought in.
I got you.
Uh, the sodium bisulfite, like I said, we've run. It had to run all the way up through most of November in order to get rid of the sodium bisulfite.
I see.
Uh, it turns into a big pile of crystal.
But we didn't need that much.
I am gonna have to pull the lines in the spring and replace them because of this whole ordeal with the chemicals.
Okay.
Uh, so, no, we did not need that much, Brenda.
Will it go bad?
The chlorine is going bad as we speak, it's off gassing, so it's getting weaker.
And you're gonna have to replace lines because of it?
I'm gonna have to replace the sodium bisulfite lines, because it's already crystallized in them, I was never informed when it went, when they ran out.
That's another thing.
But, just saying, in the, in the spring, sometimes it happens anyway with the sodium bisulfite, depending on how cold, cold the ground is. Man, it gets quiet again.
Hmm?
It gets so quiet in here?
Hmm. Looking at the numbers.
Be nice, some of these numbers are smaller.
Do what?
Be nice, some of these numbers are smaller.
Yeah. It used to, you know, uh, have you, you remember what we, I know we brought it up in one of the meetings, when you were here. What we pay, uh, on our sewer plant alone, fifty-one thousands and change a year. And you gotta pay a year ahead.
Fifty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars a year, yeah, Dave?
Is that for most of those loans?
Excuse me?
Is that for both those loans?
Did he sign both then?
No, I only handled one of them.
I don't know.
Haven't got the second one yet.
Sorry.
Yeah, um.
Oh, I started.
We got two dollars in. We got two dollars, and it's fifty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars a year, for both of them, yeah.
Okay.
And that's a lot of money.
But we only owe like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on a million dollar loan, we only paying on nineteen years, what do you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're, you're, you're all, you're almost halfway.
But we have to have one year, uh, Scott knew this.
Ahead.
We have to have one year sitting in reserve, in case we were to default, that they would take that money.
And we've got it.
And we've had it for a while, yeah, we're good.
But we need it, we can always use it.
Well, we can always use the interest off that, or?
No. No, we cannot get into that, no.
No, no, I mean, can we use the interest off of it?
The interest off of it.
If it's set in the bank, it should be.
Drawing interest.
Drawing interest.
It's set in a separate account.
But it's not in an interest drawing account?
Yes, it is, she put it in a drawing account.
Okay, so, what he's, question he's asking is, can we spend the interest off of it, as long as we keep the fifty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars you talked about?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
That's what he was asking.
Yeah.
Cause we should be making use of that for stuff we might need.
Oh, yeah, that twelve and fifteen dollars could probably buy something my interest rates are today. Anybody got any questions about anything before I adjourn this meeting?
No, but we put forty-two hundred and seventy-seven dollars of back every month for that, fifty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars, we put that into that account.
Yeah, to make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mhm, yeah.
I'm making motion we adjourn the meeting.
How about approve the warrant?
Okay. I'm making motion we approve the warrants that we signed, I'd like to think we, now, wait a minute, I might not want to approve, let me look at them. I'm making motion we approve the warrants.
I'll second that.
Which payroll included?
Payroll included.
I'll second that, sorry.
All right, the motion's been, it's been, uh, made, and seconded a cough, and all been approved. All opposed, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Motion carried and approved.
Meeting's been adjourned.
Thank you. Huh?
Meeting's been properly adjourned.
Yeah, properly adjourned.